City Clerk, could you take the role, please?
Alderman Wilson.
Here, sorry.
Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Here.
Alderman Suffredin.
Here.
Alderman Revelle.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Fleming.
She is on her way. She'll be here in about five minutes.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye, here.
Alderman Birthway.
Here.
Wen.
Here.
All right, thank you. Thank you, City Clerk. Welcome, everybody, to the Tuesday, September 29th, 2020 Evanston City Council meeting. We usually have these, as people know, on Monday, but because of the Jewish holiday Yom Kippur, the meeting was moved to today. So welcome, welcome to our last meeting in the month of September. We have all of our aldermen. We expect Alderman Fleming to be joining us shortly. Alderman Wilson, could you move a motion that we have this meeting virtually?
Yes, I move that we suspend the rules to allow us to conduct the meeting electronically using the Zoom software and in conformance with the mayor, I'm sorry, the governor's prior directives relating to the COVID-19 pandemic.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, City Clerk, could you please take the role in that motion?
Yes, Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Suffredin.
Yes, yes.
Alderman Revelle. Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Birthway.
Aye.
Alderman Wen.
Here, aye.
All right, thank, thank you. So on an eight to zero vote, the motion to hold this meeting virtually due to the pandemic, an allowance by the governor's order hereby passes. We're now going to move to the first item on the agenda, which is Mayor's Public Announcements and Proclamations. I don't have any proclamations this week. I have three announcements. The first announcement is I just wanted to give the community an update on our search for a new city manager. The Executive Search Firm did a nationwide search. There were, I think, seventy or slightly over seventy applicants who expressed an interest in the job. Last week, in executive session, the city council reviewed the applicants with the Executive Search Firm and selected four applicants that are semifinalists that we will be interviewing this Friday, October 2nd. And that will occur in executive session all day on Friday. If you do have a public comment, that meeting will be starting at 8:45 a.m. on Friday, and you can find that on the city, on the city's website. Once we finish with the semifinalists and down select from there, it will then become a public process, and the public will have the opportunity via Zoom to meet with, with different candidates. So once we get through that, we'll, we'll present the next, the next step in this process. But there will be an opportunity for the public to meet the finalists. Secondly, I just want to give the community a real quick update on the pandemic, COVID-19, and stress that we all need to continue to be vigilant, particularly as we get to colder weather and we find ourselves spending more time indoors than outdoors. And we know that being outdoors is a lot safer for all of us and for our community. We continue to do really well here in Evanston. We are reaping the benefit of all of the hard work of all of our residents and all of the organizations here in town. Today, we had three new cases. Yesterday, we had ten. Our overall total is over eleven hundred cases that we've had here in Evanston. The positivity rate, which I know a lot of people are paying attention to, continues to be, be good here. It can honestly change pretty dramatically if a high number of cases came in, but we've been around one and a half percent, and we're still around that number. We're at 1.67% as of today. That's our seven-day positivity rate. The seven-day moving average for the moving average in terms of the numbers of cases that we have right now is at 5.71. So slightly under six cases a day is our average over the last seven days. The moving average for the state of Illinois can, and on their seven-day moving average is 3.6%. That is going down. That's a positive trend in our state. And so we're going to continue to watch that number. As everyone knows, the governor has set up eleven regions. They were established regions that existed in this, in this state prior to the pandemic. We are part of the suburban Cook County region. The positivity rate there is 5.1%. So remember, even though our community positivity rate is 1.67, we're part of a larger region, and that larger region is at 5.1%. The city of Chicago is Region 11. They are their own region, and their positivity rate is actually a little less than the Cook County positivity rate, which is at 4.4%. Lastly, a lot of people are asking about the influx of Northwestern students in, in the community. Northwestern decided to keep freshmen and sophomores at home. They're all doing e-learning. Juniors and seniors are here. And Northwestern has an elaborate testing program and contact tracing program that they have created in very close collaboration with the city of Evanston's Health and Human Services Department, led by Ike Ogbo. The 10-day moving average for the positivity rate for students is 0.35%. I'll say that again, it's 0.35%. I know that aldermen and, and others are getting, you know, questions about, hey, I still see people not wearing masks, or I see people gathering, gathering together. I hear that not only about some students, right, but I hear that about, you know, some other adults here in our community. I want to stress that we are going to continue to manage this pandemic closely. We're going to make decisions that are based on facts and data and science and public health experts. We do know that masks make a difference and, and can save lives and reduce the transmission of this disease. It's going to be more important than ever as we get into the cold season, that everyone is wearing a mask. And so tonight, and this is my final, final announcement, I'm really, really pleased that under our whole of community response and recovery effort here, young people in this community have put together a Behind the Mask Challenge. This wasn't developed by a bunch of adults in the community or city staff. This was developed by young folks here in our community. And so I just want to take a couple minutes to show a Behind the Mask video so the community can understand what this challenge is. And it is for the month of October. There will be great prizes, but mostly bragging rights, if you are selected as one of the winners in this, in this competition. So I'm going to ask now if Luke or Kimberly will turn it over. We are going to hear from Mina Sharma, one of our, our young adults in this community.
I am a student at ETHS as well as a student advocate for Cradle to Career. And I just wanted to talk a little bit about what exactly this challenge is. So
There is a video with this that we're anticipating, but Luke or Kimberly, if there's a problem, please let me know.
Mayor, let me try one more time here.
Hi, everyone. My name is Mina Sharma, and I am a student at ETHS as well as a student advocate for Cradle to Career. And I just wanted to talk a little bit about what exactly this challenge is. So this is really purpose so that students all around the community of all different ages are able to relate important information as it relates to COVID-19 all the while staying behind the mask. So this is very important because we want to empower students to be able to amplify their voices and share information that will help themselves and others make sound decisions. So these submissions can be made in a variety of ways, including general PSAs, art installations, TikTok, spoken word, creative writing, poetry, songs, anything that you can think of. So entries will begin to be accepted on September 28th, and the deadline for these entries is October 26th. And you can send those to evanstonc2c@gmail.com. And the great thing about this is that you will get a gift card and gift basket if you are chosen as a winner. And then finally, I am Mina Sharma, and I am Behind the Mask.
Hi, everyone. This is Mayor Steve Hagerty. Behind the Mask. We know masks save lives during this pandemic, and we need everyone in our community to wear one. I'm so proud of the young people who are pushing this campaign in our community. Remember, everyone, wear a mask.
Family Focus Evanston is Behind the Mask.
Hi, everyone. This is Claudia from Metro Squash Evanston, and we are Behind the Mask.
Hi, everyone. This is Jude Laude, Director of Programs at the Youth Job Center. Here at YJC, we're all behind the mask.
Hi, guys. I'm Jillian, and I'm from EPHS, and we are Behind the Mask.
Hi, everybody. I'm
All right. So hopefully, everybody, everybody gets the idea. So I want to see all our aldermen, every, everyone in our, in our community, behind a mask. You can, we will, we will send information out this week. It'll be in our Thursday update about this, about this challenge. And again, it is being led by our young people in this community, but it is not just for young people. It's for everybody in our community. We want to get out, and we want to stress, if there's one email that I get, probably more than any other, it's about, you know, seeing someone or a group of folks that weren't wearing masks. So let's take it upon each of us to make sure we do something that we know from public health authorities makes a difference. Wear a mask. Alderman Rainey.
Yes, I just want to clarify. It wasn't real obvious, but is, this is a project of advocates in action through Cradle to Career? Is that what this?
So it, it ended, I, we threw out the idea. We talked about it at Unified Command at the EOC. I reached out to some of the folks on the mayor's task force, Kimberly Ross Holmes being one, and Kimberly ran with it. And so, yes, our, our advocates for action are the ones that you saw in that video and have been a big part of putting this campaign together. And again, the whole campaign is their idea.
But that is, that's fabulous. This is fabulous. And I have my mask right here.
Perfect. Thank, 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 thank you, Alderman Rainey. Thank you, everybody. Again, more information will come out this week from the city on that. And I ask everybody to please go out there and promote it. And you can upload your video of you wearing your mask and being behind the mask. All right, next, we're going to turn to any announcements from our city manager. Do we have interim city managers strolling with us?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. I have no announcements this evening.
All right. Thank you, Erica. How about any communications from our city clerk?
Have, just, you know, the, the kind of ongoing communication about elections. So just, as we all know, early voting begins October 19th here at the Evanston Civic Center. There will also be a drop box that is available at the Evanston Civic Center during early voting, so you can drop off your mail-in ballot there. I do want, and so, you know, you can go to the Evanston City Clerk's page, Election Information sub tab, to find out all the information about the upcoming national presidential elections. Secondly, I do want to give a quick regarding the municipal elections that are coming up. A lot of folks circulating petitions now. And I do want to make sure that we're providing clarity on one issue that I've gotten a number of questions about in the last week or so. If you are a, you know, here in Evanston, we are a nonpartisan form of government. You know, we, we have aldermen who are running in individual wards, and of course, the mayor and clerk running citywide. Folks are only allowed to sign one petition per candidate in, for any given office. So I just want to make sure that that's clear. The clerk's office, you know, will have a session on objections likely in the, in the, in the coming weeks, to make sure folks are clear about the objection process. But we also, you know, as we have focused on previously, going to make sure everybody has the right information, you know, as they're circulating. So you can check out the clerk's page, webpage for, as well as our Facebook page for information on filing. We have two sessions that were recorded. You know, one, a shorter 10-minute session that goes through the filing guidelines, as well as an hour-long session with two election attorneys and a staff attorney from the Board of Elections. And so we hope folks have all the information that they need. No further report.
All right, great. Thank you, Clerk Reed. Next, we're going to move to public comment. We set aside, per our rules, 45 minutes for public comment. We take the total number of people that have signed up for public comment, divided by the 45 minutes, and arrive at the allotted time for each speaker. Tonight, we do have a lot of speakers. We have thirty that have signed up. And so I am going to set aside a minute thirty for each speaker. So if you're going to speak tonight, you have one minute and thirty seconds. I will keep track of the, the minute thirty. You'll hear a sound go off. That'll just be the timer. When that does, your time will be up, and then we'll move to, to the next speaker. The first, the first three speakers tonight, the first one's going to be Joel Shapiro, Renee Payden, and then Mike Vasilko. So, Mr. Shapiro, welcome.
Mayor, this is Dan Shapiro.
Oh, Dan Shapiro. Excuse me for saying Joel, yes.
Sure. I just wanted to make sure we all have the right Mr. Mayor and City Council, thank you very much for allowing me to speak to you. Many of you have heard me and seen me before in reference to the matter P4, which is on your agenda, the MAP Amendment for Orienton Avenue. I do appreciate your time. In light of the fact that we all are limited on our comments, I'd like to address just a couple things of recent note, recent information that came to the city. There have been a couple correspondence regarding addressing one zoning standard that has been a standard for over sixty years, and has character of the neighborhood. Zoning standards for MAP Amendments always have this standard, along with these seven other standards from LaSalle Bank. What, what is disappointing for me to see is that that particular zoning standard that has come down from our state Supreme Court has now been distorted by some folks who oppose this to suggest discrimination, exclusionary housing, et cetera. And that's shameful. That's a shameful distortion of the law, and that is absolutely no, 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 no consideration with respect to the zoning standards, which I articulated to the PND last week. I believe the MAP Amendment satisfies all the standards that, that are critical and that are in the Evanston zoning ordinance, as well as the state law. The other thing is, to the extent there are objectors to this, they have not addressed any of the standards. They have not said that they disagree with any of the standards or provided any testimony whatsoever. One can only assume that therefore they have no evidence or testimony which would rebut any of the standards which we address for the MAP Amendment. So we encourage you to please consider this MAP Amendment. It's important for the community. It's important for the larger community of the city of Evanston. It does satisfy the standard, and it does allow for this block to really have the type of zoning that I believe is appropriate in what was originally intended. So I thank you for your time.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Shapiro. All right, our next, our next speaker, it's speaker, that was my Massachusetts accent, speaker, is Renee Payden, and then Mike Vasilko, and then Bob Hercules. Welcome, Renee.
Mayor, I'm not sure Renee is on.
Okay, then we'll, we'll hold on her and come back. How about Mike Vasilko and then Bob Hercules? And then it looks like, Mike, hold for one second. It looks like I've got a total, actually, of less than thirty speakers. Some were double counted for some reason on, on there. So I'm going to set it right now without doing the quick calculation at a minute forty-five, so you get fifteen extra seconds each speaker. Okay, Mike, welcome.
Fantastic. Thank you. Mike Vasilko, 2728 Reese. I guess I, I'd like to know regarding the appointments for the Emergency Response Subcommittee, if there was consideration given to the apparent opinion of some of the members that were, are being recommended. In other words, is this a diverse group of people or people with a diverse opinion range? You know, is everybody already in favor of defunding the police, for instance, or are there other opinions that are being represented in that group? I think it's important that you look at that carefully before you just accept that group of nominees. The second thing I'd like to know, since we're approaching the budget season, is whether or not our staff has considered what appears to be the soon opening of the Greenhouse, which is, looks like a retail cannabis store in Skokie on Old Orchard Road, just across from the shopping center. Heard a lot of reviews about that. Looks like a big facility. I think it's going to eat away at any revenue that you're counting on for tax revenue. So I'd like to know if staff is, is aware of it and has anticipated that going into our budget season. I'd like the council to vote against the amusement tax, A11. That's something that I, I think those in Evan, there's some at Evanston who can afford to pay the tax. I'm sure there's many at Evanston, I think, that look forward to a little amusement at home through their online streaming or TV, and it would be a shame to tax them on top of everything else that's going on. Lastly, I guess I'd like to know with the opening of the Robert Crown Center coming up, if the city is planning to post any warnings to people using the turf, about any concerns about cancer-causing agents in that turf? It's the equivalent of posting a warning on cigarettes or alcoholic beverages, and it should be something that you warn people about. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. Next up, we've got Bob Hercules. And just, so I'm being straight, straight up with everybody. I did the quick calculation with the twenty-three speakers, so each speaker now can have a minute fifty-five. All right, so we got Mr. Hercules, then Doreen Revi Price, I believe, then Alyssa Kaplan.
Yes, thank you, ma'am. I'm going to pass on this, but I'm going to turn it over to my wife, Julie Johnson.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You can, I have you on the list, Julie, so go, go ahead, and you got a minute fifty.
We're getting an echo.
Okay.
If you're listening to it online, that might be.
Mayor, that's because they're both signed in at the same time. So it looks like now that they're muted, either Julie or her husband is muted. I think they should be fine.
All right, there we go. Welcome, Julie.
Hi. So, thanks. Hello, everyone. I just want to say that, you know, equity in policing and housing and healthcare and all these areas of our life is finally getting attention. I'm glad of that. I want to see big changes in Evanston. At the same time, this particular rezoning is not exclusionary, and I want to explain why. This rezoning will make it possible for Evanston families and residents to continue to live here and for other Evanston families to live here in the future. I have been here for twenty-four wonderful years. We've lived across from a dorm. It's been quiet, full of supervised students. We love it here. But now we have been, and everyone here has been a family. But now we've been getting calls and postcards for the last year from people wanting to buy our house. And I couldn't understand it. And then it dawned on me that our zoning, which I've never even looked at, had something to do with this. And what started to become clear is that Evan, investors are looking for houses to buy. They want houses that can be subdivided into multiple units. They want to pack these houses with as many students as possible. They can't make as good of a return on their investment if they just have three students in a house. They, they want to have six or nine or whatever. And the rents are sky-high. The parents are willing to pay very high rents for their, for their children, they're not children, to live so close to university. And the thing is that Evanston residents don't rent those apartments. They're very expensive. And, and even when these student houses sell, the prices are also really, really high because the rental income is so high. So the buyers, if there are sales of these student houses, are also investors. And Evanston residents start to sell out and abandon those homes, or the blocks, anyway. And I, you probably know this story, but it's something that's been dawning on us. I feel really sad to see this as a possibility for this block, for the place I've lived. I really, I hope to live my life, the rest of my life here. So I just, please encourage you to, don't let student housing, multiple-unit student housing destroy this healthy student block. It would distort the housing market and, and really price families out if, if student housing takes over. Thank you very much.
Thank, thank, thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Johnson. Thank you, or Mrs. Johnson and Mr. Hercules. Next up, we've got Doreen Price, then Alyssa Kaplan, then Max Ross. Do we have Doreen with us tonight?
Mayor, I don't think I see her.
Okay. How about Alyssa Kaplan?
I'm going to, my husband is going to read my statement as well.
Alyssa, is your husband Max Ross?
Yes. That's right.
All right, welcome.
I have a prepared statement. My name is Max Ross, and I've lived on the 1900 block of Orienton for twelve years. I want to address three points developers have been making here. And make no mistake, it's only developers and absentee landlords who oppose this rezoning. The people who actually live here, the ones who care about this neighborhood and are losing sleep over the possibility of losing their homes, we're the ones that support it. First, I want to address the absolutely breathtaking cynicism of developers using the very real need for racial equity and affordability. the very real need for racial equity and affordable housing to argue against this zoning change. Please don't buy this. This has nothing to do with racial equity, and it is literally the opposite of affordable housing. This is about pushing Evanston residents out of their homes so out-of-town developers can triple the number of wealthy students they put in the house at $1,000 a room. To talk about racial equity and affordable housing here is really just absurd. Second, I was stunned to hear that one developer's argument against rezoning is that he will not be able to rent his new investment property to a family because it's next to a newly converted student house. So let me repeat that. He thinks a family won't want to live next to a converted student house. Yet that developer wants the option of converting the family home he bought into a multi-unit complex that has a dozen or more students. And my family lives right here. What does he think I'm going to do when he converts his house into a giant fraternity? Who does he think will buy my house? His own arguments prove our point. Nuisance ordinances don't solve this problem, and this kind of housing deters families. It takes housing away from Evanston families. And finally, the developer says that we hate students. Then he says that we rent to them in our homes. We've never had a single problem with an owner-occupied house with a couple of students. You know, the difference should really be obvious between a family renting to a couple of students to make ends meet and a developer making a supersized complex of unsupervised students who want to party. So please put the interests of Evanston residents over the wallets of out-of-town developers. Please support this change and please save my home. Thank you.
Thank you, Ross. Thank you, Alyssa. Next up, we've got Darian Halligan, then Terry Warman, then Peter Mitchell. Do we have Darian with us?
Hi, sorry about that. Thanks. Mayor Hagerty, City Council, residents of Evanston. My name's Darian Halligan. I live in the 7th Ward, and I wanted to give you guys a look at kind of a poster child for the accessible housing ordinance that you have there. I'm a, I'm a new resident to Evanston. I'm currently a family of six. I have a wife. I have two small kids, one that's four and a half, one that is one and a half, and I have a mother-in-law. I have maybe another child on the way, and I have my mom, who would like to come and live with us as well. To have the ability to have an accessible dwelling unit in my household as an extension would be life-changing for us. It would give me the ability to do the right thing and appropriately care for my family, my mother-in-law, my mother, through their end of days. And that is what I fully intend to do at the city of Evanston. So with that, I hope that you will say yes to that ordinance. One other thing, on the Orington thing, you know, I walked down that block of Orington, and I, I read the summary from the Planning and Development Committee. If you guys are going to deny their request to go to R1, I hope that you will come back with a way to help these residences and prevent developers coming in to just change their neighborhood and do high rental places for the students of Northwestern. That's all they're trying to do. So again, if you're going to deny it, at least come up with another solution to help them for what they really want to try to accomplish. And that's, that's my statement. Thank you guys so much for listening. Have a great day.
Great. Thank, thank you for joining us tonight, Darian.
Sure.
Next up, we've got Terry Warman, then Peter Mitchell, then Robinson Marcus. Welcome, Terry.
Thank you, and I am behind the mask as well. Good evening, Mayor Hagerty and members of the City Council. My name is Terry Warman. I'm Associate State Director with AARP Illinois and our issue expert for livable communities, including accessory dwelling units. AARP is a nonpartisan nonprofit nationwide organization that helps empower people to choose how they live as they age and fights for the issues that matter so much to families, including the promotion of livable communities. On behalf of AARP Illinois and our members in Evanston, AARP supports the accessory dwelling unit ordinance 86020 and appreciates the opportunity to comment in support of the ordinance. We know that by 2031, five Americans will be 50 and older, and about 80% of those individuals want to remain in their own communities and their homes as they age. In addition, we found that seven in 10 would consider building an accessory dwelling unit for a loved one who needs care, and I think Mr. Halligan made that point really well. So AARP commends the city of Evanston for your systematic expansion of the ability of its residents to consider an accessory dwelling unit as a viable housing option over the last two years. With each new addition to your zoning ordinance, the city of Evanston has recognized two ways, new ways to respond to the growing need for affordable and varied types of housing desired by its residents. The new ordinance expands those opportunities for Evanston's 50-plus residents as well and affords them the opportunity to continue to serve as anchors in their communities. I also want to, I'm also excited that the city of Evanston, in partnership with the Evanston Development Cooperative, was selected to receive a 2020 AARP Community Challenge Grant. And I understand this grant is going to enable you to produce a public guide on accessory dwelling units and host a series of informational virtual workshops on ADUs for Evanston residents. You know, it's one thing to pass an ordinance, it's another for your residents to understand how they themselves can take advantage of this new opportunity. So congratulations for recognizing that need, and we're excited to see the results of this effort. So again, thank you for the opportunity for AARP to comment tonight in support of the accessory dwelling unit ordinance 86020. Thank you.
Okay, so next, next up, we've got Peter Mitchell, and he'll be followed by Robinson Marcus, and then Rebecca Bader. I apologize if I am mispronouncing anyone's name. Welcome, Peter.
Thank you. Thank you all for doing all that you do for Evanston. My wife and I, Laurel Tyler, live at 1942 Orington, and we are strongly supporting the fact that we get rezoned as single family. The real issue here is we want to stop future home conversions that are not owner-occupied. You've probably read all of the details about it, at least I hope you have, but we now have three houses on our block that have anywhere between six and 10, hard-to-even-know students. For us, this is about putting a stake in the ground to take back the neighborhood. It really is a simple decision, and we hope you see it as well. This is about emotion. This is about community. This is about quality of life, and it should not be about all of the issues of conforming, not conforming, lot size, all of the things that we can get bogged down in. And, and the reason I feel so strongly is I've got firsthand experience living next to a house that is full of sorority girls. They change out every six months to a year. I can never tell, I never know who's there. And there are seven of them that live there now. And frankly, there's a lot of energy there. It's great to live north, near Northwestern, to have a lot of energy during the day, but at night, it's hellish. And there seems to be absolutely no way that we can get a consistent resolution here, talking to the girls, talking to the landlord, talking to the police, and talking to Northwestern. And if we allow more unsupervised college students, because frankly, they're a special case, we will effectively drive out what some of my other neighbors have already talked about tonight. And, and that is, is critical. Across the street is a dorm that houses 400, 450 students. No one has ever had an issue with a single student there. But next door to me and next door to my neighbors, two-door, you know, at the other end of the block, it was just going to be monumentous. So we are asking you to allow us to take one small step to help the residents, help the city, because this is an issue that doesn't just affect our block, it affects neighborhoods throughout this town, and we all know that. You all know it, but we get lost in the minutia of zoning issues about lot size and conforming, which is really not the fundamental issue.
Thank, thank.
We are hoping that you agree with us and vote in favor of our issue. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Peter. We got Robbie Marcus next, then Rebecca Bader, and then David Schoenfeld. Welcome, Robbie.
Hi there. Can you all hear me okay?
We can.
Great. Good evening to members of City Council, city staff, residents in attendance. My name is Robinson Robbie Marcus. I am a 4th Ward resident, and I'm a worker-owner and Vice President at the Evanston Development Cooperative. I'm speaking in support of Item P5, the ordinance on accessory dwelling units. I think, given the effects of the coronavirus pandemic this year, the home has shaped many of our lives more than ever in 2020. Yet, as of the consolidated plan approved by City Council in April of this year, 40.1% of our residents are cost-burdened or severely cost-burdened. It's difficult to live a healthy life when the cost of living stretches a human beyond their means. And I think we, as a community, need to collectively identify ways to make our community affordable to people of all races, ages, incomes, ethnicities, and identities. And tonight, with the ADU ordinance before you, at no financial cost to our city government, we can amend our zoning code to better allow for homes at a smaller scale across our community. By legalizing attached accessory dwelling units, we create the opportunity for lower-cost housing units to be added in all Evanston neighborhoods. A cost-burden homeowner is struggling with mortgage payments, can get help paying the bills by converting a basement into a rental unit. Further, this ordinance will make it easier for an older resident to age in place in an accessible ground-level ADU, similar to the scenario Mr. Halligan himself is in. I think tonight, our City Council has the power to make our suburb a more inclusive, welcoming community committed to racial justice and housing affordability with these zoning changes. I want to thank city staff and the Plan Commission for both their hard work and their support of this initiative, and I encourage the adoption of this ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank, thank you, Robbie, and you did it right there at a minute 55 seconds. Perfect. All right, next up, we've got Rebecca Bader. And Rebecca, I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing your last name, so please go ahead and introduce yourself, then David Schoenfeld, then Barbara Blades. Welcome, Rebecca.
Thank you. Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you. You're on.
All right. So three years ago, my family made a really big decision to purchase and live in a 100-plus-year-old home in Evanston, and specifically on Orington Avenue. We made this huge choice because of the historic character of both this city and this street flowing seamlessly from Ingleside to Emerson. My neighbors and I have, over the years, dedicated ourselves to maintaining these wonderful historic homes for our families, for the neighborhood, and for the future of these beautiful, single-family houses, that they might stand here for another 100 years. I fear that absentee landlords renting to rotating groups of students would be less attentive to maintenance issues. We ask for your help now to preserve the 1900 block of Orington Avenue by extending our historic streets' single-family zoning to include our historic block. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Rebecca. Next up, we've got David Schoenfeld, Barbara Blades, then Peter Miller. Welcome, David.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, members of the council. I live about a block north at 23, 2039 Orington, about a block north of the 1900 block, and I strongly urge the council to adopt the amended R1 zoning for that block. I've been involved for more than 25 years in land use issues on behalf of this neighborhood in several capacities. This neighborhood has worked very hard for decades to protect its residential character against constant development pressures. The prospect of a wave of absentee ownership and rental houses on the 1900 block is as great a threat to that residential character as we have faced in at least a quarter of a century. Allowing that block to turn over to absentee ownership of student rentals, as we've seen nearby on Sherman Avenue, would create a situation in which students treat the block as a part of the Northwestern campus while the university has no responsibility for their behavior. This development would inevitably result in the severe disruption of the lives, such as you just heard about from Mr. Mitchell, in a family's living and was meant to be a residential and not a university setting. I can tell you from my own experience, living next door to student rentals, that owner-occupancy makes all the difference in the world. I have a building next door, lots of ownership, lots of owner-occupancy, never had problems with that building. Conversely, right across the alley, a house owned by one of the investors on the 1900 block, we've had nothing but trouble with them. There are legitimate concerns about exclusionary zoning and nimbyism, but they don't apply in this instance by any stretch. The absentee investors are not buying these houses across the street from Northwestern to provide affordable housing to working families. They want to rent at premiums to wealthy Northwestern students. The neighbors on that block have invested enormously to preserve the character of that block as a benefit to all of us, and the zoning should be consistent across the neighborhood. The residents of that block deserve the same zoning as the rest of our community, the rest of our neighborhood. So I strongly urge you to approve the proposed amendment.
Thank, thank you. Thank you, David. Next up, we've got Barbara Blades, then Peter Miller, then Sean Jones.
I'm John, not Barbara, you'll quickly realize. Can you hear me?
We got you, John. Welcome.
I'm not a resident of Orington, but I'm here to give a loud shout for the zoning relief. It's an item that shouldn't even be open to debate. It's urgent and necessary to prevent the street from becoming yet another casualty of predatory blockbusters. That is, a systematic and willful destabilization of a family neighborhood by landlord investors and realtors. Without the zoning change, many of Orington's family homes and two flats will be transformed into student tenements, fraternity sorority party annexes, playgrounds for beer pong, junkyards for solo cups and bud cans. It's bound to happen, if you're skeptical, you think I'm exaggerating, look at what's happening or what's already happened in the Fireman's Park neighborhood. On Maple Avenue, where I live, or on Sherman and Simpson and Gaffield and Hamlin and Garnett, all formerly family neighborhoods that fell like bowling pins. If you act now and you make what should be an obvious and easy decision, prevent that from happening to Orington, and save yourself from having to deal with the long and messy mornings after. Thank you for listening.
Great. Thank, thank you, John. We got Peter Miller, then Sean Jones, then Linda Del Bosque.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I urge you, please, to not agree to hear the appeal of the recent Preservation Commission ruling that denied a certificate of appropriateness to alterations of the barn at 2404 Ridge Avenue. This appeal is entirely without merit. It repeats unsubstantiated claims that were rejected by the Preservation Commission last year. It seeks to substitute the appellant's opinion for the Preservation Commission's judgment. The appellant is cynically using the processes of city government to delay coming into compliance with the preservation ordinance, which he has violated. For more than a year, the appellant has sought to evade responsibility for illegally altering the barn. The appeal before you tonight is the latest effort. Please vote no on hearing the appeal. Thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you, Peter. Next up, we've got Sean Jones, Linda Del Bosque, then Judith Tredway.
Good evening, council.
Good evening, council. Firstly, to respond on SP one, the, to hear the appeal of the certificate of appropriateness. This case has been going on since nineteen ninety seven. As we heard in planning and development, it's tied up with the subdivision. We've already set a meeting to deal with kind of the issues of the subdivision. This matter is wrapped up with it. We have a November thirteenth deadline. I urge you just to hear this appeal on November ninth so that we can try to get all of these issues resolved on one fell swoop, everything to do with this property. So please just hear the appeal, hear it on November ninth. That's when we're hearing the other piece of this. We should have everything wrapped up by then. Turning to the R one zoning application. I, I hear the neighbors and everyone sympathizes with the neighbors, honestly. We don't want to live next to big party animal houses. But let's be real here, R one doesn't solve their problem. It doesn't address their issues. The owner of an R one property can rent their house out, just like the owner of an R four property. There are no, no restrictions on renting your house. If you own a house, if it's R one, you can rent it. It's R four, you can rent it. This is the rationale most cited by the plan, plan commission, voted five to two to deny the zoning change. They also went through exhaustively the standards that were raised earlier. We don't go through the standards, the plan commission already dealt with those. The, the, the standards just aren't met in this case, as the plan commission noted. While it does nothing to really solve the problems they're talking about, you still have beer pong in R one, you still have absentee landlords in R one. You end up hurting people. You hurt the property owner at seven fourteen Foster, who's done nothing but maintain this six flat for years. It's a, a, a six flat that's been, was built a hundred and thirteen years ago, obviously as a six flat. You have the letter from his banker saying he cannot get a loan to improve this property if it shifts to R one. You are hurting him. He pays over thirty seven thousand dollars a year in property taxes, and you're going to diminish his property value. And for what? You're not going to solve the problems. The problems with student living in houses are real. We need to address them. But R one is not the way to do it. In fact, R one is just bad policy entirely, and the city needs to move away from R one. And I believe they are. The Equity and Empowerment Commission is already talking about eliminating R one because it eliminates flexibility. Housing advocates and planners are in agreement. It's just bad policy. And it's particularly bad policy when it's instituted in this way, where it's reactionary. It is not part of a comprehensive plan. This is reacting to the sale of one house. There are only ten homes that are really going to be affected by this. You have a grandfather.
Sean, Sean, we're way, way over our time, so I just need you to wrap up in ten seconds.
Okay, R one is obviously the most exclusionary zoning available. You definitely discriminate and exclude others. Please, let's move away from R one entirely, and particularly in this instance where it's reactionary and really spot zoning. Thank you.
Sean. Uh, next up we've got Linda Del Bosque, then Judith Tredway, then Tina Payton.
Mm hmm.
Welcome, welcome, Linda.
Oh, hi, welcome. I just got through working out, so excuse me. Okay, if we're, are going to be arguing about R one as a community, rather if they're purchasing a home that's over a hundred years old, or they're a new home that's just moving into Evanston community, and we're going to retire and live here for many years, and we're arguing about students, or just, why don't we revisit the R one and protect the families who've invested to live here and create a family and, and do not particularly want to move next to a frat or sorority house? Yes, this is a college stu, I mean, college city, but at the same time, this is a community built by family, by generations. And you see from ETH students moving back twenty years later. So people do want to, this is a destination city. So R one just needs to be revisited, but at the same time, protect the community members that have purchased a home and that are living their generation, it's a generational home. So that's my, that's my input. Two, the city manager, as we are identifying as a community, we need to make sure that the city manager has a perspective of the needs of Hispanic community, no matter the ethnic descent. We currently need to review the digital divide. I don't know what's taking so long. I know they're doing a good job, I'm sure they are. But there needs to be a digital divide program in place. I emailed G Mayor, also Luke. Many municipal cities across the United States are creating their own business and putting it under a fund. And that is something that City of Evanston can look at as a way to create and generate money. Parking opportunity for payments. Thank you to Alderman Fleming for speaking to Luke and just addressing this. We do have to put something in plan. I have personally contributed and sponsored the City of Evanston parking. I paid over five thousand dollars in parking in three years. I still have parking tickets out there. By the time I'm done, I'll probably be at six thousand dollars. We need to invest in our community and put a parking payment in plan. Towing is not the answer. And, um.
We're, 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 we're over our time, Linda, if you can wrap up.
I'm going to wrap that, senior living communities, they're being built. I, we need to figure out what's going on and why we're having so many built in Evanston. Thank you.
All right, thank, thank you.
You're welcome.
We've got Judith Tredway, uh, next, Tina Payton, uh, then I believe Kenneth, uh, Chua, I apologize if I'm mispronouncing your name. Uh, I've got Alyssa Ross here, but I believe that's Alyssa Kaplan, uh, who they spoke earlier. If there's a separate Alyssa Ross that wants to speak, um, I'll come to you at the very end.
I don't believe she's on mayor.
Okay, how about Tina Payton?
I have not seen her either, Mayor.
All right. How about Kenneth Chua?
Here, I'm here.
Well, welcome, Kenneth.
Hi, unable to start the video, start my video. Can you see, oh, there we go. Hi, good evening, Mayor Hargreaves, and city council members, and good evening to my neighbors Peter and Laura, Matt and Megan, Bob and Julie, Alicia and Max, Rebecca and Philip and Susan, and Ken Beerman. Mr. Beerman, I'm pretty supposed to like you because I have the same name as you. Good evening, in particular to Alderman Judy, who brought this topic up, because I know she's trying to help and listen to their constituents. I believe the overarching goal of this meeting is to come up with a resolution to, one, preserve architectural integrity; two, provide safe and decent homes for property owners and renters; three, maintain harmonious living amongst neighbor; and four, reduce ruckus and uncontrolled noise at all hours of the day. If you look around you, I believe that our historical preservation commission has done a more than wonderful job. I believe that our planning commission and planning and zoning committee members have also done a wonderful job. Our law enforcers have also done a great job, given the resources we as citizens have given them. We just need to open our eyes and look around us. We see nice houses and dilapidated houses side by side across all zoning areas. By rezoning, we are insulting our neighbors, who probably take care of the properties the way that they should, regardless of the zoning. It is not the zoning that makes a house a nice house. It is the property owners that causes it. No amount of rezoning will make things better. It is neighbors, talking to neighbors, and helping one another that will make things better. I want to be able to walk down the street and look at my neighbors in the eye and them knowing that I'm doing everything to help them, rather than to create problems for them. I'm not upset with them because I understand their concerns. But rezoning is not the solution. Let us not put a giant duct tape on the wrong pipe, hoping that the leak will go away. Let us focus on the pipe that has the leak and fix it properly. I asked the city council to reject the proposal for rezoning the Orington area. In the end, I want the, I want the concerns of my fellow neighbors to be resolved because resolving their concerns can also help increase my property value. But rezoning is not the solution. The city wants flexible, adaptable zoning classifications, open to all, and not highly restricted classifications, open to only a select few. Let us be inclusive rather than exclusive. Let us vote to reject this petition for rezoning, and instead talk about how we can all make this a better place to live. Changing to R one simply would not solve the problems we are trying to solve. Thank you.
You did a good job, thank you, thank you, Kenneth.
I'm nervous.
No, you did perfect. Uh, all right, we're, we got, I think, two speakers left. We've got Sue Lalabac and then Mike Ellis. So welcome, welcome, Sue.
Great, thank you. Um, hello, everybody, I'm Sue Lalabac with Connections for the Homeless and Joining Forces for Affordable Housing. I'll speak briefly on several points related to affordable housing. Uh, one, regarding the zoning change proposed for Orington Avenue, Joining Forces advocates that the city address the very serious problem that the community is trying to solve, but without downzoning and reducing the flexibility with which land. Second, we thank Alderman Simmons for making a referral for a review and revision of the city zoning code through a lens of racial equity and affordability. This is the right time to do this work, and this is a key step in undoing redlining and supporting reparations. Three, also related to flexibility and land use, Joining Forces strongly supports the ADU ordinance changes being voted on tonight. And last, affordable housing was part of the strategy for economic development described at the last council meeting. We appreciate this and would like to make two related points. First, we hope that affordable housing will be considered as the very first possible use for all city-owned plots of land that are being considered for sale. Second, mixed income buildings are one way to create affordability. However, we can create even more with one hundred percent affordable buildings. Developers do not need the city to figure out how to fund their buildings. Developers just need a plot of land, and they need to know that the community supports their developments. They will figure out the financing. One hundred percent affordable housing is entirely possible. And given the low occupancy rates for new market rate buildings described in recent reports to city council, we believe there is no reason not to make one hundred affordable housing development a priority and a choice. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Uh, and then last, we've got Mike Ellis. Are you with us, Mike?
Yes.
Well, all right, welcome, Mike.
Welcome, uh, good evening, Mayor and city council members. Appreciate you having us on this evening. Um, we would just like to take this opportunity to, uh, say we'd appreciate your support on the recommended parks and recreation resolution seventy nine R twenty and the honorary street sign for Black Lives Matter Way in front of ETHS on Dodge Street between church and lake intersections. Uh, we had an eventful day with the leadership of Alderman Braithwaite and some assistance from Alderman Rue Simmons. And we were able to send a message motivated by what we've seen throughout the country, led by Washington DC's painting of Black Lives Matter, uh, on their street in front of the White House. So I want to, uh, introduce to you three of our basketball players at the high school that were instrumental in, in leading us with this project.
Hello. Hello, how are you doing? Um, my name is Isaiah Holden. I'm speaking on behalf of the Evanston basketball team. I'm a senior. Um, it was really nice and very, um, it was a very memorable moment to see how the community came out together. Um, painting the, the street, Black Lives Matter, it was very important to basketball team and I, just to see that, like, although, uh, it was just very, it was important because we, we are, we have to make a change. And painting the street, I feel like that was the first step into making that change. And we would just like to thank you for giving us this opportunity to paint the street. Um, it was very, it was very nice.
Hello, this is Elijah, Elijah Bull, I'm a senior at Evanston. Uh, in addition to what Isaiah said, um, I believe it will be a great opportunity to create an honorary sign, uh, going up right on Dodge there, um, to really, um, emphasize the, um, the idea of Black Lives Matter and equality. And with the upcoming weather conditions coming up during the winter, well, the Black Lives Matter painting may fade, so, um, it's just another great, um, opportunity to, uh, restate the idea of Black Lives Matter with the honorary sign.
Hello, everybody, my name is Blake Peters. Um, I'll be a senior, or I am a senior right now at ETHS. Um, I'd like to echo some of the same sentiments as Isaiah and Elijah, but, um, really, we just feel like this is a great opportunity to promote a lot of the values that many of us in our community hold dear. Um, we feel like, you know, promotes inclusivity, anti-racism, and, you know, things related to that. So we would really appreciate your support, and, um, we look forward to hearing the result. Thank you.
Great, great. Thank, thank, thank you, Mike, and, uh, and thank you to, to the three players that, that just spoke in support of, uh, Black Lives Matter Way, uh, which is on our agenda tonight. So we'll, we'll talk more about that shortly. Um, Luke Stowe, I just want to make sure I, I went through everybody on the list. Just want to confirm that with you.
Um, John Blades was the only other one I think I have, but I don't see him on right now.
So John, John spoke, John was connected. We had a couple, like, husband-wife groups, so, yeah, we got, we got John, so. All right, so thank, thank you, everybody, for coming out and speaking at public comment at the city council meeting. Um, I know I speak on behalf of the entire, uh, city council when I say we appreciate hearing directly from the community on a variety of issues. Um, so thank you for that. Uh, we're now going to move to the agenda for this evening. Uh, we have one item on the agenda, which is a special order of business. And, um, I'm going to, uh, ask Alderman, um, well, I'm going to, I'm going to ask if there is a Alderman that would like to move SP one. If you could just, uh, raise your hand and I'll call on you. All right, just, uh, for the public that's watching SP.
Does it just need to be moved?
Well, S, SP one, just so we're clear, SP one is the appeal of the preservation commission decision denying a certificate of appropriateness for the barn structure at twenty four oh four Ridge Avenue to approve existing conditions of windows and skylights. Uh, and I'm just going to read it so everyone understands. Uh, the city council may make a motion, that's why I was asking if anyone has a motion. The city council may make a motion to accept the application for appeal. If a motion is made and adopted, the city council shall affirm, modify, or reverse the decision of the preservation commission within forty five days, no later than November thirteenth, twenty twenty. If no motion to accept the application for appeal is made and adopted, the decision of the commission shall be final. So I will ask again, uh, if there's a council member that would like to move SP one.
I'll move it.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion? Okay, I don't see, I don't see a second on the council to, uh, this motion. So, uh, the motion is not being moved to the, uh, to the city council, uh, for a vote this evening. Um, for anyone that's watching, um, I will say we periodically have appeals from the preservation commission come up, and this is sort of how the city council has handled it. This isn't the first time, um, that, uh, the council's chosen not to move, uh, a motion. Um, so with that, uh, SP one is not moved for action this evening. We're now going to move to, uh, the consent agenda and other items on, on the agenda. I'm going to ask Alderman Rue Simmons, uh, well, actually, uh, um, Alderman, Alderman Rue Simmons, what I'm going to ask of you is, um, I'm going to ask you to move the city council meetings and then, um, and then the consent agenda. But because we had APW and because we had planning and development tonight, uh, I'm going to first ask all the council members if there are certain items that you would like to remove from the council agenda tonight for discussion. So if you would take a minute, look at the, um, um, agenda, and if the chairs of the two committees, you know, kept notes if you want to, if you want to start, but it's open to anyone, uh, to remove items. Which one's? A, A eleven is removed.
And five was removed also, let me see.
Which one, I didn't catch what you said. A five?
A five was removed also.
A eleven.
Can I remove, uh, item A eight?
Mayor, I'm sorry, Peter. Go ahead.
And one more, and item A 10.
A 10, okay.
As Mayor, P two was tabled uh until November 9th.
All right, let me just make a note of that. P two tabled till November 9th, okay?
I would like, I'd like to remove uh P five.
Five is off, okay.
I have um, questions for A 15 and A 16.
Say that again, A what?
15 and 16.
A 15, A 16 are off, okay.
One.
Say again.
E one.
P one as well, okay.
And Mayor, um, A five, I've moved, um, it wasn't just taken off the agenda, it was removed all the way, so we don't need to vote for it. It was, it was just removed from the.
Removed completely from the agenda. Okay, in committee, okay. All right, so I'm going to announce uh what's been removed now, and let me know if there's anything else council members want to add. Um, so um, A five, we just said is off the agenda entirely. Uh, next one was A eight, um, is off the consent agenda. Next one was A 10 is off the consent agenda. A 11 is off. A 15 is off the agenda. A 16 is off. P one is off, and then P two has been tabled till November uh 9th, and then P five is off the agenda. Is there anything else council members would like to take off? Okay, I'll give you one more minute. Okay, seeing seeing none, I'm going to ask if Alderman Rue Simmons would move the minutes and then the, and then just the entire consent agenda as we've agreed to. You don't have to read off each, each item, but you're just moving um, everything in APW and then uh P and D and then appointments.
Um, so the minutes, uh, CM one through three?
Yes, please.
Okay, staff recommends approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting of August 10th, 2020 for action. Um, are we taking a vote after each or read it through?
No, I'm just doing these separate because they weren't in committee.
Okay.
Yep, and and then if a council member wants any of these minutes off, just make note of that.
Got it. CM two, staff recommends approval of the minutes of the special city council meeting of September 8th, 2020 is for action. CM three, staff recommends approval of the meeting minutes of regular city council meeting, September 14th, 2020 is for action. And I'm going to read through the consent.
Yeah, you don't need to read through it. So now all you need, all you need to do is, since there was no objection, we're going to include the CM one, two, and three uh on the consent agenda. So if you just want to move the consent agenda, you know, motion, motion the consent agenda, we'll see if there's a second and then vote on it.
Okay, move approval for consent agenda.
Second.
Okay. Uh, city clerk, could you please take the role on the consent agenda?
Yes. Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton?
Aye.
Alderman Revel?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Alderman Rainey?
You're on mute. You're on mute.
Aye.
Um, Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
And Alderman Wen.
Aye.
All right, thank you, city clerk. The consent agenda of the Evanston City Council passes on a nine to zero vote. We're now going to move to the items that were removed from the consent agenda. Uh, Alderman Rue Simmons, uh, can you please move A, um, excuse me, the first one will be A eight.
Eight, okay, so A five is eight off completely. A eight. Uh, staff recommends adoption of Resolution 77 R 20 designating Herbert Park and Herbert Payne Park funding for new signage comes from the Capital Improvement Fund. This is for action. Second.
Any discussion on this item? Alderman Braithwaite?
This is a quick, I had asked, uh, I'm going to ask for this item to be held over to the next meeting on October 12th. Uh, it'll give us a little bit more opportunity to notify the family of Betty Payne as well as uh neighbors to be a part of, of, of this uh moment.
Second.
All right, so A eight is going to be held then, um.
Next meeting is October 12th, so that's our date certain.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Uh, Alderman Rue Simmons, could you uh move A 10?
Sure. A 10, the Parks and Recreation and Community Service Board recommend adoption of Resolution 79 R 20 designating a portion of Dodge Avenue between Church Street and Lake Street with the honorary street name Black Lives Matter Way. Three street signs are made for the honoree. One sign is installed at the end of the designated uh block area, and the third sign is given to the honoree. The approximate cost to create all three signs is $200, uh, which will um, be funded by Public Works, and there is a fiscal year 2020 budget of $58,000 and a year-to-date balance of $15,000. I move this for action. Second.
All right, this is open for any discussion? Alderman Braithwaite?
Thank you. And just as a matter of procedure, and I see Alderman Simmons again, so we didn't vote on the consent agenda. I just wanted to pull this off, make a few comments, and then also allow that this didn't pass on consent and it was a roll-call vote uh for for two reasons. So do we need to vote on this at the end of voting on consent? Is that it? Or do we vote right now?
We, we, we've already voted on the consent.
Oh, we're good. Okay, I'm sorry.
So this is just an item separately. We'll vote on it once we're done with discussion.
Perfect. I just wanted to again thank uh Coach Ellis and his and his staff that day. There were so many members of the community that that showed up, uh, all just a lot of the student athletes, and I just want to take a moment to acknowledge that. I know that they were rushed on time. At the top of the meeting, he acknowledged Alderman Simmons as well as Paulina that worked very hard behind the scenes. Add Director Lawrence Hemingway to that list as well as uh Lumi and Taishik who helped with uh facilitating the language. Uh, we were able to take this through ex board, and I think just in terms of the process, I wanted to thank them. Um, the other thing I want to call out because I'm going to assume this is going to pass with unanimous, as much criticism as we have to take from many members of of our local community uh who use labels like racism and we don't get behind things, um, I think that this is significant, and there are many towns and communities that would not have an opportunity to do this, and I take pride that it's going to pass at our council. I just wanted to bring attention to that, so thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Rue Simmons?
Thank you. Um, just to add on to Alderman Braithwaite, thank you to Coach Ellis and all of the members of the boys and girls' basketball teams, all the other students, and everyone from the community that came in that day um in an immediate response to take some action um in our solidarity um against uh anti-black racism. So thank you for your boldness, for your effort, for seeing through our long process in municipal government and continuing to be patient. I'm really glad to see a permanent installation of our commitment to black lives um there at uh Dodge Street, and it is due in part to your leadership, Coach Ellis, and the rest of the team. Thank you. Thank you to Alderman Braithwaite for making sure that it got done, and thank you to our staff.
You're here. All right, seeing no more discussion on this item. City clerk, could you please take the role on uh A 10, which is Resolution 79 dash R dash 20, designating the portion of Dodge Avenue between Church Street and Lake Street with the honorary street name signed Black Lives Matter Way?
Gladly. Uh, Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
And Alderman Wen.
Aye.
All right, uh, Resolution 79 dash R dash 20, uh, designating Church Street between Church Street and Lake Street, the honorary street name Black Lives Matter Way passes unanimously on the Evanston City Council nine to zero. So thank you, thank you to uh, to the basketball team and everyone else that has been leading that effort over there on um on Dodge. Um, we are now going to move to item A 11. Uh, Alderman Rue Simmons, can you move that?
Yes. A 11, uh, staff recommends city council adoption of ordinance 55020, amending the amusement tax to include online streaming services and to clarify that the tax applies to media that is capable of being streamed to mobile devices. Amusement tax revenue is deposited to the city's general fund. This is for introduction.
Is there a second? Are you second in that, Alderman? Uh, okay, uh, did you second that, Alderman Wen?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So this item's open for discussion. Alderman Sufferton?
Uh, I just want to uh declare, uh, I was informed by Nicholas Cummings that there was communication between a client of mine and the city on this matter, so I will abstain. I'm voting on that.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? Uh, Alderman Fleming?
I have a question for clarification. I wrote notes on the last streaming tax, but given that we are now in pandemic and kids are streaming, you know, everything, I know my kids had to watch some kind of show or, you know, some kind of streaming video. How do those things work for our students who, like, are using hotspots and are streaming things for that, that bill? Or is this only for, imagine it's for subscriptions because now we don't have cell phone and all that stuff, but that could explain to me how that would work.
I can explain, uh, unless Corporation Council comes on, the tax is only applied to subscription services. So if you have a subscription to Netflix or a subscription to Hulu, um, then it would be applied at the 5% rate at the monthly charge or for any purchases that may be made uh during the course of the month. Not applied to any student services or any schooling.
So if the school had a Hulu account for whatever reason, are they they're going to charge just for the one time purchase, not for all the streaming? Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions on this item? All right, seeing none. Uh, city clerk, could you please take the role on A 11, ordinance 55 dash zero dash 20, amending the amusement tax? City clerk, are you with us? We can't hear you if you're talking.
I don't see him in the meeting anymore.
All right, I'm gonna, um, okay, I'm gonna ask uh Kimberly Rich- Richardson, who sometimes serves as our deputy city clerk, if she would take the role on A 11. Okay, tonight, starting with um Alderman Wilson. Are you with us, Kimberly?
Mayor, are you allowed to take the role just to get us through this moment?
How about, I, I think it's probably, uh, how about uh Erica Sturley, since she's with us? Can you take the role, Erica?
Sure. Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Couldn't hear you. Alderman Rue Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton? Alderman Revel?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
No.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wen?
Aye.
Alderman, uh, that, that's it.
All right, thank, thank you. Uh, ordinance 55 dash zero dash 20, amending the amusement tax passes the Evanston City Council on a seven to one vote, uh, with Alderman Sufferton abstaining.
Uh, me, Mr. Mayor? Um, uh, removing P four.
Excuse me?
P four should have been removed. I missed that. I assumed that it had been pulled off for discussion. What are our options now at this point?
We will, um, Kelly?
AP four, too.
Uh, let's see, maybe, did I miss it? I didn't think I heard it.
It had not been pulled off.
All right, if it wasn't pulled, then it was voted on the consent agenda, we can just vote to reconsider that vote because it was a mistake. So someone could just move to reconsider it and.
Move to reconsider.
Second.
And do I have to then take a whole vote on that, Kelly, of the council? All right, the city clerk, could you please take the role on uh reconsidering item P four to pull it off the consent agenda?
Yes. Uh, Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton? Alderman Sufferton?
All right, I'll let, see what happens.
I'm sorry, Alderman Sufferton?
Aye.
Alderman Revel?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
And Alderman Wen.
Aye.
All right, so uh, P four has now uh been removed from the consent agenda, and the council will reconsider it shortly. Um, and that was on a nine to zero vote to reconsider. All right, uh, Alderman Rue Simmons, could you move A 15?
A 15, staff recommends city council adoption of ordinance 79020 by which the city council would amend Title III Business Regulations, Chapter Two Municipal Occupation Taxes and the Evanston Municipal Code providing for an infrastructure maintenance fee. This is for action.
There's a second.
Second.
All right, this is open for discussion. Alderman Fleming?
Yeah, I have a question just for staff. I realize this um fee is not necessarily very big, but it's going to, I believe, overlap at some point with the current commet fee. So I'm just interested to see how we're going to communicate that to the residents.
Good evening, um, uh, Honorable Mayor, members of uh, the city council and interim uh city manager Sterling Kumar Jensen, uh, Chief Sustainability and Resilience Officer. Um, we, uh, I think we will, we can certainly do uh communications via our um our e-news and some of our other platforms to, to make residents aware. We've been working on language just to try to make it very clear what the overlap is um and what the intended or what the um anticipated impact of the, of the overlapping fee are. Um, we are also prepared to, uh, because the overlap will be uh in effect for about 17 months, we're also um committed to uh at the end of the year and moving into early 2021, uh, looking at ways to try to ease um that burden, particularly on residents that are already feeling um uh pinched in their utility bills and their utility expenses, uh, particularly on the electric side. We have a lot of um new opportunities coming up in terms of our energy agreements, and so we're hopeful we'll be able to find ways to to ease this at least for some of, some residents. Um, if there are uh suggestions that Alderman um have as to um locations or or groups that we should share this information with, um, I'd be glad to, to make sure that we um, uh, communicate directly with organizations or groups.
And Kumar, what is the, um, I realize that commet fee we pay in the rears, but what is the downside of us waiting until we're finished with the is the downside of us waiting until we're finished with the commet fees to start collecting this one, so they're not too fee?
The downside is that the city would lose about $480,000 in, I'm just gonna call it value, that we have used historically to pay for electricity for the facilities that we're, we're getting unbilled or free electricity for. And so, the transition is moving from getting this unbilled electricity to getting a cash payment. And by receiving that cash payment and beginning to purchase electricity for those facilities, we will be able to purchase renewable energy for those facilities and look at things like solar on-site as well as off-site. So, the downside is that we would have to cover about $480,000 in operating expenses.
Okay. Thank you. So, I, I understand this and I, I do like the idea of not, you know, paying commet, given all of the news with the corruption there. However, as you mentioned, you know, we, we have residents who are really, you know, were really counting every penny before and are really at the breaking point now. And so, even though this is not a huge fee, just, you know, any fee seems like a lot to some people. And, and again, it gets back to people feeling like the city is nickel and diming them. It would be great if we did not overlap with the commet fee. It will be a little bit easier to tolerate. I will suggest, I, I will not support it because I hear from residents all the time about what they can't afford, but I will suggest maybe even passed, assuming, you know, 15 and 16 go past, maybe there is an insert that goes in the water bill, since most people get that, just explaining. Versus our, our e-newsletter, I know we send a lot of e-newsletters out and everyone does not get them. So, I think we, as much as paper costs us and we don't want to be adding to landfills, I think anything where we have where there's a rate change is we might want to communicate in our water bill with a flyer of some sort and maybe a link or something else in there, just to make sure people are older residents, are making, you know, they're actually seeing what's happening and they're not worried about being in jam or something.
Absolutely. It's a great suggestion.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Alderman Fleming. Any other discussion or questions on this item? All right. Seeing none, City Clerk, could you please take the role on item A 15, ordinance 79-0-20?
Yes. Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Suffertin?
Aye.
Alderman Ravel?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Brithwaite?
You're muted. You're muted. You're muted, Peter.
Aye. And then Alderman Wen.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Alderman Suffertin, were you an aye on that? I didn't.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. All right. So, I, A 15, ordinance 79-0-20, amending Title III Business Regulations, Chapter 2 Municipal Occupation Taxes of the Evanston Municipal Code, providing for an infrastructure maintenance fee, passes the Evanston City Council on an eight to one vote. Alderman Rue Simmons, could you move A 16?
Absolutely. Staff recommends city council adoption of ordinance 85020, amending Chapter, excuse me, Title VIII, Chapter 4, Part 9, Section 2 Franchise Imposition of Franchise Service Administration Administrative Fees. This is for action.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Oh, this is open for discussion. Alderman Fleming?
Uh, yes. So, Kumari, I have the same question about communication, but I think we covered that. Thank you for adding on the job description. That was very helpful. When do you anticipate this person coming on board?
Um, I would defer to interim City Manager Erica Storley as to when that position would be approved and/or posted.
Okay. And then what is, just for the public who are watching, what do you estimate the average fee being for, I forget the papers you gave, Andy, you had a breakdown in here, but, Andy, can you explain what the average rate of increase would be, the average fees?
Well, so, it is a little difficult to say average across all of the accounts because the, the range is pretty large. So, for, for commercial accounts that are receiving one collection a week, so they have one garbage collection a week, they're actually all going to receive a cost savings. That's about, that's close to 500 accounts. It, as you, as you ramp up in the number of pickups that you have a week, the average cost ranges from, if you have two collections a week, the average price change is going to be about $5. And if you have six pickups a week, the average price range could be, will the average price range will be $59. I want to caveat that by saying that as the, the position that would be hired, as well as some of our existing team, would be working to prioritize in reaching out to the customers that are on that higher end first, to try to work with them to, to make sure that they, they don't see that 59, that average of $59 increase on that bill.
Okay. So, again, I, you know, I'm not that excited about new fees, particularly fees that are gonna go to new positions, but, you know, I do continue to hear from people about trash collection, particularly at our, you know, multifamily homes and apartment buildings and kind of regulating those, which I know our staff does a good job on, but takes a lot of time. So, I, I will support this, but I will just encourage you to be very clear and aggressive with communications before we have people who are calling about a new rate or new fee that they see and are not clear about that.
Absolutely.
Any other, any other questions or comments on this item? Alderman Rainey?
Yeah, I know that we discussed this earlier, but I, I'd really like to see an analysis by other members of our staff regarding the absolute need for this additional position. Um, I don't know. It seems that we need, we, we need so many people that we've already laid off or actually fired. And I, I'm just wondering if this is the one greatest and latest position that we have to add to our workforce? I'm, I'm just not sure. I, I feel, I have a, there's something pulling me. I, I, I'm gonna support it, but I'm very concerned that maybe not enough work has been done to decide whether or not we need this additional, uh, uh, position.
Thank you. Interim Manager Sterling, do you want to make any remark to that?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just going to add that this will be part of the budget discussion that we have next month, so it's not, you know, it's, it's up for continued debate.
Okay. All right.
All right. Any other discussion or questions on this item? Alderman Fleming?
So then, for clarification, because tonight we're talking about action for this fee, and if we're not sure on the position, but we've already approved the fee, what, what happens then? The fee remains, but maybe the position doesn't?
Well, my, my proposal is going to be that we wait for the funding to come in, to make sure that it comes in as we expect it to, before we would begin the funding of any new position. So, we could do a couple of options. If the council wished to proceed, we could recruit for the position mid-year, once we got a sense of the funding and guaranteed that it was coming in as we anticipated. And that, that, that point, we could budget it for, for the six months of 2021, or we could simply wait and do a budget amendment at the appropriate time, mid-year, next year, or whenever the timing was sufficient for ensuring that the revenue was there.
But, that makes sense, which is why I asked the first question about when we're gonna post the shop. And then, okay, so Kumari, have you had an intern who worked on such items before?
Um, which part? The analysis of the fee?
Going out to try to encourage people to, to use the, you know, compost and emit our zero waste.
Yeah, absolutely. So, when I first started in 2014, my, my first project was working with the Public Works Department at the time to go out and canvas about 180 different multifamily properties and work with them one-on-one to talk them through individual property level analysis of changing their, their recycling and switching over to, or switching out their garbage for recycling capacity. And so, we actually have a lot of the sort of programmatic infrastructure in place from pilot that we did back in 2014. And so, there certainly would, would need to be updates and changes because that was only with multifamily properties. And so, commercial entities, particularly ones that have food service, have different needs. But I, I feel very confident in our ability to provide the programmatic oversight and to understand what the workload is in terms of how much time it would take someone to, to work individually with properties.
Okay. Well, I, I agree with Alderman Rainey. I mean, you know, it sounds, sounds feasible, but I'm concerned about, you know, kind of collecting fees, hoping that we'll have enough to hire a person, some kind of charging people, answer something that we're maybe not sure is going to take off. And I am, I mean, we have laid off a ton of people and while this is important, I, you know, I do have some concern about if it is the most important, if I'm gonna, you know, transfer the cost to the residents. So, you know, I think we come back to voting no then. May I be open to more discussion and kind of fleshing it out more, but if I only vote tonight, we're not folding it, it's not for discussion, you know, just, I'm not totally sold on it, for lack of a better term.
Thank you all. Thank you, Alderman. Seeing no more discussion or questions on this item. City Clerk, could you please take the role on A 16, ordinance 85-0-20, amending Title VIII, Chapter 4, Part 9, Section 2 Franchise Imposition of Franchise Service Administrative Fee?
Yes. Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Suffertin?
Aye.
Alderman Ravel?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Brithwaite?
You're muted.
There you go. Aye.
And Alderman Wen?
Aye.
All right. Item A 16 passes the Evanston City Council for action on an eight to one vote. All right. Alderman Wen, could you please move item P 1? We're now gonna move into the items on planning and development that were moved from the consent agenda.
Uh, yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item P 1 is renewal contract for landlord tenant services with Metropolitan Tenants Organization and Lawyers Committee for Better Housing for, from October 1, 2020 to December 31, 2021. The Housing and Homelessness Commission and staff recommend approval of a not-to-exceed amount of $87,500 renewal contract with Metropolitan Tenants Organization and Lawyers Committee for Better Housing for landlord tenant services.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. This item's open for discussion and conversation. Alderman Fleming?
Yeah, um, I would just, one question. So, part of the scope of service here is an attorney, I'm trying to find it, who would help with, I think, evictions. And so, given that we have a moratorium and we're expecting a flood of evictions when the courts open, I wanted to just see if staff can give us, give me an idea of how many evictions or, you know, how, was there capacity of that kind of representation?
None.
Is Sarah here or some?
Sarah is here. She's now off mute. So, Sarah, you want to take that?
I am. Uh, Lawyers Committee for Better Housing does a great deal of representation for Chicago people when it, for?
It's a bit hard to hear, Ms. Flex.
I'm sorry, I'm on, um?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Sarah. Just, you know, speak as loud as you can.
Um, they have not been doing a great deal of this work in Evanston, but their capacity, I don't expect their capacity would be, I mean, they have substantial capacity. I think frankly, all the legal services organizations will be strained when these moratoriums burn off because it's very much like what we're dealing with, with almost everything about the pandemic. You know, I don't think any organization is going to have the capacity to deal with absolutely everyone who needs help. But Lawyers Committee for Better Housing does have significant capacity and, as I say, has been working in Chicago for a long time. I can certainly get you more information on how many cases they handle in general. I don't have that information at the moment.
In the materials we received, I'm sorry to jump in, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, go ahead, Alderman.
In, in the materials we received on page 279 of the packet, in the letter we received from the Metropolitan Tenants Organization, they comment that the Lawyers Committee for Better Housing has been in existence for 40 years and they have represented, they have defended thousands of tenants in eviction court to help them avoid hopelessness. I, I think a, an organization, the Lawyers Committee, that's been around for 40 years must have been, clearly has done work through the, the Great Recession period of time, so they probably have had a lot of experience with 10 years ago or, or so, when that, when the last time we had a big peak. So, it sounds like they're very experienced.
Yeah. My question is not regarding experience, it's regarding capacity that we're paying them for. So, you know, I don't, I'm not doubting their experience, I just realized that a lot of people are in need for service in the next year, of which we're paying them up to $80,000. So, I want to make sure, you know, we're getting our money's worth. So, at this point, it says, you know, their hotline, they're, they're doing 35 calls, 35 to 40 calls a week, or, excuse me, per month, although we're paying them for a hotline that's open 100 hours a week. They provide written materials upon request and only two, at least two two-hour trainings. So, Sarah, do you think, given the capacity we anticipate, will they be able to add more online trainings that people can access instead of the two that they are committing to in these documents and then the one two-hour training?
We could potentially do more trainings. The benefit that we learned this year of doing trainings online and then recording them is we actually can make them accessible to many, many people. I would like to address your question about capacity for, um, legal assistance, direct legal assistance, though. The contract with Lawyers Committee for Better Housing and MTO is divided into two components and there is, the $58,500 is paid on a quarterly, is divided equally and paid on a quarterly basis. The remaining funds are the funds that would be used for specifically representing clients in court. So, there are two, two parts to it. But we will ramp up the work to address evictions and things like that. Lawyers Committee for Better Housing has already, for example, developed a form that they haven't gone live with because the state moratorium is still in effect, but a form that if the state moratorium ends before the CDC one, that can be used by people to fill out the, the required information that they need to submit to show they have followed the CDC requirements. So, they're really thinking very creatively about how to get ready for that sort of thing. And this really is what they are in business to do. This is what Lawyers Committee for Better Housing does all the time.
Okay. So, my last comment, I've, I've read, so I realize the breakdown in the cost. I did read the packet. So, we're paying Mark Schwartz, he would be an additional fee, so that would be the additional $29,000 if we went with it. So, that's just one attorney. So, that was part of my question in terms of their capacity for people in Evanston who might call 311 looking for service, who might think that this service can help them. So, as we move forward in the year, I'd just like to focus attention on the services they are providing. Because while I, I'm gonna approve the contract because I know people need assistance, I just want to make sure we are getting the most for our money, particularly because this is not an affordable housing fund and, you know, in, in perfect world, I'd much rather have this money go into paying someone's rent or, you know, going to a developer, making some affordable housing or something that was more tangible for people. However, because it's coming out of the Affordable Housing Fund, and so I would like that to be used for housing. However, I will support this because this ideally would help keep people in their housing, particularly as we come out of the pandemic. So, thank you.
Um, one last comment. Mark Schwartz isn't the only lawyer's committee for better housing. They have other staff who work all the time with MTO on advising tenants and the additional money that is the paid as specific cases are handled is, um, separate and different from that. The Lawyers Committee for Better Housing lawyers and legal staff work with MTO all the time on issues, including eviction.
Thank, thank you, Sarah. Alderman Wilson? Alderman Fleming, do you have more?
I'm done.
Alderman Wilson?
Thank you. Actually, Ms. Flex, thank you. I appreciate you answered most of the?
Thank you. Actually, Ms. Flex, thank you. I appreciate you answered most of the questions and points I was going to try to raise. But I think that this is, this is such a unique situation, particularly with a series of moratoriums that at some point are going to end on a given day, which I think is going to result in just probably an unmanageable crush of demand. So, you know, a radar, it's going to be challenging. We have to power through this. But I know that a number of other community partners are contemplating this and presumably will be working to also try to provide some additional capacity in different ways. But, you know, to the extent that these two groups can do more of what you were describing, Ms. Flex, like things like online availability of information, just as much information as we can make readily available to people who might not be able to get through to this phone call on, you know, January 3rd after the moratorium comes undone and cases start getting filed. You know, we just, we need to be as prepared as we can be. It's going to be hard, but we'll just do the best we can do.
We will absolutely do that. We've already started doing that sort of thing, both the city website and MTO and their website, for example. We put up a lot of information about the applications for both rent assistance from, you know. So, we really are trying to build out MTO's website and the city's website. We're also communicating with other partners in Evanston who work by connection to the homeless and others.
Right. Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Well, I would like, I would like you to copy us on that information. It really gets impossible after a while to search through all the different pages on the city's website to find this little bit of information and that little bit of information. What I would like, and I have, I have criticized these two groups in the past. However, I do want to say that over the years, there's nothing been more supportive to tenants and landlords than the Lawyers Committee for Better Housing. I've worked with them for years and years and years and not by, not through the city, but through other housing organizations I've been involved with. Their credentials have been impeccable. However, what I'd like to see is I'd like to see some, a few good stories where Lawyers Committee for Better Housing and MTO helped Evanston residents. I've not really seen that or felt that. So, and I think Sarah knows that I've had some issues with getting help from them, but they're the only game in town as far as I can see at this point. And our tenants and landlords and homeowners are all going to need help pretty soon. So, if not right now. So, I'm going to support this, but I really would like to see them step up to the plate more in Evanston, be more hands-on. I mean, I've never gotten a thing from Lawyers Committee or Metropolitan Tenants saying, hey, here's what we've done lately, or here's how you could help your constituents so they don't have to call us, or here's some critical information to, you know, protect tenants who are being served eviction papers. Because no matter what the county or the state says, landlords are serving tenants with eviction notices. We all know that. And that is terrifying for some of these people. So, just wanted to get my two cents in.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. All right. Seeing no more comments, Alderman Fleming?
Just real quick. So, Sarah, just like I said to Kamara, and I think Alderman Rainey's point was exactly right. Can we just do a better job of advertising this? I think having people who are overwhelmed to think to call 311 or look through our website for a lot of materials doesn't always work. So, you know, if we can do something to just make sure the information gets out there a little better, that would be helpful. Because as Alderman Rainey said, I've sent people over there, but I don't know what happens after I send them. And by the time people call me, they feel like they've done everything else trying to find help. So, however we can get that, you know, it's great.
But Alderman Fleming, our staff does enough. I think these two organizations that we pay this money to ought to do some outreach. That's what I was saying. Yeah.
All right. Any other questions or comments on this item? All right. Seeing none, city clerk, could you please take the role on P1, which was for action? It's a renewal contract for landlord tenant services with Metropolitan Tenants Organization and Lawyers Committee for Better Housing for October 1, 2020 through December 31st, 2021.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton?
Aye.
Alderman Revell?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
And Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
All right. Item P1 passes the Evanston City Council on a nine to zero vote. Alderman Nguyen, could you please move item P4?
Yes. Item P4 is ordinance 84020 granting a MAP amendment at 1910 to 1946 Orington Avenue and 714 to 716 Foster Street to rezone from the R4A general residential district to R1 single-family residential district. I move this for action.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. This item's open for discussion. Alderman Fisk?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make an amendment to this to remove 714, 716 Foster Street from the MAP amendment.
Second.
Any discussions on this amendment? Seeing none, city clerk, could you please take the role on the amendment to remove 714 to 716 Foster?
I apologize. I didn't catch the, who's second did the...
I did.
Alderman Rainey?
Thank you. Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton?
Aye.
Alderman Revell?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming? I'm sorry, Alderman Rainey? As well?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
And Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
All right. The amendment to remove 714 to 716 Foster passes the Evanston City Council on a nine to zero vote. Any further discussion on this item? All right. Seeing none, city clerk, could you please take the role on P4, ordinance 84-0-20 granting a MAP amendment at 1910 to 1946 Orington Avenue?
Sorry.
Alderman Simmons?
For a discussion on this item, we have obviously quite a bit of work that needs to be done in the area to address the alleged concerns of the neighbors. And in moving this forward, I want to know just, Alderman Fisk, I know you're paying very close attention to this. How does this address the issues that are being brought up in a zoning change?
Okay. So, as I've mentioned before, but happy to repeat again, this is...
Yeah, quick question. Closing...
Pardon me? I...
Alderman Braithwaite, you want to mute? Go ahead, Alderman Fisk.
So, what we see is that we see that the developers and investors are not buying up properties in the R1 zone. What they are doing is targeting the R4A areas, the T2 areas, the R5 areas, all of which exist in close proximity to the 1900 block of Orington. I think that what's important is to keep this as simple as possible, and that is that this is not, this is not about students per se. It's about absentee landlords and the problems that, lack of supervision play in the neighborhood and on the residential neighbors, and how that puts them in the position of pretty much having to monitor these houses for violations and behavior because there's no one else in the houses to do that. Now, this particular block, and I want to be really clear, that this block is not a block that's setting policy or should be considered, I think, as a precedent-setting decision. This is a block that is trying to keep and retain the residential nature of the block. And as we've heard from folks who have commented previously, and we've seen this in the Fireman's Park neighborhood, John Blade spoke to this tonight, and the folks on Sherman have spoken to this, is that once, once investors and absentee landlords are present, it makes it very hard for folks to feel like they would be comfortable investing in the neighborhood. Some of you may have seen some of the comments on the roundtable where people said, I wouldn't buy in a neighborhood next to, next to student housing. I mean, it's just, it is, and I want to, I want to amend that slightly because, again, this block is unique because people on the block have rented a couple of rooms in the attic to their, to students. That's worked well because those houses are, have live-in owners. We have a rooming house on the block that has been a rooming house forever. It is owner-occupied. There is never a complaint from that. The complaint is when there is no one in the houses and where people are just buying up houses for huge amounts of money and then renting them out to students, and then they are gone. Under R4A, there is an opportunity, this is what the Plan Commission saw that or interpreted, that there was an opportunity for the fact that conversions were subject to special uses. There was an opportunity for the residents to object. And this is exhausting to people who have to be on the lookout all the time for what's going to happen to their neighborhood. And those of you who live in R1 zones right now, you don't have to worry about this. So, this is, this is 11 houses, all of which are now single-family houses, and there's no two-flat. I don't know where our staff came up with the fact, or their assumption that there was a two-flat. There's no two-flat on the block. The removing of the 714-16 Foster, it was included just because it was already zoned R4, and it seemed like a cleaner way to do this. But clearly there's a way that we can exclude that, and we've done that. So, that's great. But you've heard what the folks have said tonight, and they are pleading with you to please give them some help and relieve some of this stress that's on them. And we think that R1 is a tool that will help this. And not only that, but just right across the street, north on Orington, everything down Orington is all zoned R1. There is absolutely no reason in the world that this block was ever zoned R4 or R4A or anything other than R1. And I think that's just a, that's a problem that has existed in our zoning ordinance for such a long time that it's time to correct that. We clearly have an instance in front of us where a condition with these investors, and it's, again, as people have said, this is not affordable housing by any, by any means. This is a way to get rich quick, and it is so disruptive to the neighborhood. And I think we really, we really need to find a way to support people who are facing such disruption as this brings to them. So, I really ask you to support these 11 neighbors who are, have come to you and worked so hard on this to present their case to you. So...
Thank you, Alderman Fisk. Alderman Rue Simmons?
Thank you. So, I hear, I hear you and appreciate everyone's comments and concerns. Again, I think I've said this before, this zoning change request doesn't enforce the bad habits and property standard issues of, of, of the area. So, we also have spent a lot of time in the city being educated on racial equity. And I get that this particular block would not have an immediate opportunity for affordable housing, given that two-bedroom basement apartments are going for $2,100 a month in rent. But we did just have an extensive redlining exhibit and residential zoning exhibit from the Equity Empowerment Commission. And I've made a referral last week that we look at our zoning broadly. So, it's difficult to support any R1 zoning from what we're learning about how that has impacted and segregated our city and disinvested certain neighborhoods and how that's impacted our family and informed our disparities, our racial disparities. So, with that, I'm uncomfortable advancing any R1 zoning, and I hope that city staff will come back very soon with a way that we could look at addressing our zoning. But I do want to give staff direction that there is some immediate remedy, some relief that is given to the conditions that we're hearing about for the residents on this block, as well as in the Fireman's Park neighborhood. A meeting with Northwestern must happen quickly so that we can enforce these conditions. And that's just where I'm at. So, I'm hoping that we can move forward with some zoning assessment citywide. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Fisk?
Yeah. I'm sorry. I just need to answer some of that because that's, you know, we can, we can move ahead with the policy discussion and, you know, the reference tonight to, to the Plan Commission. But this, again, if, if you, this is going on in your ward, Alderman Rue Simmons. You know, Mr. Blade spoke to that tonight. You know Northwestern is not going to come and enforce. They don't do that. They're just, they're not helpful in this. This is up to our police department, our staff to support, to enforce. This does not incur, beer pong does not incur in the R1 zone. We don't see that anywhere going down Orington Avenue, except in this block and in the R5 zone that's on Sherman Avenue. This, a vote tonight for this is a vote for absentee landlords and investors. It is not a vote on affordable housing. It's, it is anti-affordable housing because it's putting in play houses that are family homes and putting them in the hands of, of absentee landlords and investors. This is just the wrong thing to do. It's against everything that I know that all of us stand for. And it was happening. I mean, if it was happening in your front yard, you'd recognize it and you'd say no to it. I mean, again, if this had been done years ago in the Fireman's Park neighborhood, it might have been helpful. But it didn't happen. If this had happened years ago in the 21, 20 and 2200 block of Sherman Avenue, when, with a mix of housing from townhouses to two flats and three flats and single-family homes, if that had been possible, when that was 100% owner-occupied, and now it's less than 30% owner-occupied, students. This isn't about students per se because, as I said before, this block has students living on it, and they're living happily on it. But we're talking about houses that, that will be snatched up, just like they've been on Sherman Avenue and Fireman's Park neighborhood. They will be snatched up by developers, and we will have lost the affordable housing the same way we've lost the affordable housing in the Fireman's Park neighborhood. And I think you're thinking about this all wrong. And I, I understand that you have, you have your perspective. I respect that. But anyone else in your neighborhoods, again, if this were going on, you would say no. And that's all these neighborhood, these neighbors are asking you to do, is just please give them some help. Again, the R1 zoning is perfectly reasonable for them to be asking.
Thank you.
And I just can't, I just can't believe that you guys would be even considering putting the interests of investors over the interests of neighbors who are trying to fight to save their block.
Thank you, Alderman Fisk. Any other discussion on this item? Alderman Sufferton?
Alderman Fisk, I really admire your advocacy on behalf of you.
Alderman Fisk, I really admire your advocacy on behalf of your constituents. But I do have a question. Why do we tolerate Northwestern's position that they can't control their students' behavior off-campus? What's the history there?
Because.
I was just going to say, I mean, this is a pretty big policy tool that cities have in terms of zoning, and I think as a city, we want to move away from R1. And I have heard what the neighbor said, and I understand it. But why do we tolerate Northwestern's hands-off attitude about the behavior of their students in our community? What's the history?
I think what you can do is you can ask the law department. I mean, when students come out and they're renting apartments in Evanston, they're Evanston residents. They are our responsibility. When, for example, the university decided not to allow alcohol on campus any longer, the problems with alcohol came off-campus, and we enforced. And it's the same way with behavior now. This is the city of Evanston's responsibility. It's not Northwestern's. And that's what they'll tell you. I mean.
But I mean, and this may be a question for our law department. This may be a question for Northwestern's administration. But they have the ability to sanction their students in their university discipline code rather than having it be a responsibility of our police department and our residents to police their behavior. Is that correct? I mean, if you look at other universities that have codes of conduct, they apply on and off-campus. Has Northwestern shown no interest in doing?
I think that's something that you have to ask our law department. And it's probably a good idea to do that. But I want to kind of bring you back to the real question here, and that is the question of investors and absentee landlords. But I mean, I hear you. And it would be wonderful if the Northwestern police, and actually, this occurs more in the Fireman's Park neighborhood. I mean, if John Blades were still on here, he could probably come on and give you some information about the Northwestern police and their lack of enforcement. Now, Northwestern did go around with Dave Davis and knock on doors and ask the Northwestern students to wear masks. But most students were home during the day when they came by. I mean, that's the kind of community outreach that they do. But they're not there. They're not there when more instances arise. I mean, it's just not. Again, this behavior, this is not the real issue. The real issue is investors buying up property close to campus and and turning it into what they want. I mean, it's just, it's driving out Evanston residents.
All right, any other discussion on this? Alderman Rainey?
Well, I could tell you that during my service on the council, and it was not that many years ago, that Northwestern had a student handbook that warned students not to live south of Dempster because it was too dangerous. And, you know, I mean, I've always thought that was very, very interesting.
All right, anything else? All right, seeing nothing else on this, City Clerk, could you please take the role on Item P4, Ordinance 84-20-84-0-20, granting a map amendment at 1910 to 1946 Orington Avenue to rezone from the R4A general residential district to R1 single-family residential district?
Yes. Alderman Wilson?
No.
Alderman, I'm sorry, Alderman Rue Simmons?
No.
Alderman Suffordin?
No.
Alderman Revel?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
No.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Brithwaite?
No.
Alderman? And Alderman?
Alderman, when was the last? Okay. Ordinance 84-0-20 failed to pass the Evanston City Council. The vote was five passing it, excuse me, four for passing it, five voted not to pass it. So Item P4 fails to pass. All right. We're now going to move to Item P5. Alderman Wayne, could you move that?
Yes. Item P5 is Ordinance 86020 amending Title VI of the Evanston City Code to create accessory dwelling unit regulations and to revise the calculation of building lot coverage. The Plan Commission and staff recommend the adoption of this ordinance, a text amendment to the zoning ordinance to create accessory dwelling unit regulations and to revise the calculation of building lot coverage. I move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, so this item is now open for discussion. We'll start with Alderman Revel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I asked to have this removed from the consent agenda because I need to abstain from voting on this item because I'm a member of the Evanston Development Cooperative. It's a local firm that is focused on building auxiliary dwelling units and therefore stands to benefit from passage of this ordinance. And I need to just say that I did vote on it in Planning and Development two weeks ago because I've been focusing on sort of the broader impact of the ordinance because it's going to be allowing attached and interior ADUs and therefore encouraging lots more homeowners and contractors to get involved in creating more ADUs in our community. But I now realize that EDC is likely to benefit more than other contractors from this ordinance, and so I need to abstain.
Thank you, Alderman Revel. Any other questions, comments on this item? All right, seeing none, City Clerk, could you please take the role on P5? Ordinance 86-0-20 amending Title VI of the Evanston City Code to create accessory dwelling unit regulations and to revise the calculation of building lot coverage?
Yes. Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Suffordin?
Aye.
Alderman Revel?
I abstain.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk? Alderman Fisk?
Where is Alderman Fisk? I don't see her on here.
Probably talking to constituents.
Yeah, yeah, I'd move on. We just, she won't vote on this item.
Aye.
My issue, is she not connected? Because we do have to, according to the executive order, wait if she's not connected.
I think we've lost, we should just move forward. I don't think she's.
The executive order says we have to pause if we lose a member.
Yeah, but we got, this is going to pass even if she votes no. This.
I did that.
But.
She's technically absent from the meeting, so we can just move forward.
I vote aye.
Thank you, Alderman. All right, so.
I vote aye.
Okay. Thank you, Alderman. Alderman, when? Also, Item P5, creating the accessory dwelling unit regulations and revising the calculation of building lot coverage passes the Evanston City Council on a seven to zero vote with Alderman Revel abstaining and Alderman Fisk absent for this vote. All right, Fisk. All right, well, I want to thank the city council. That was a big, that's a big change. So thank you, everybody. Thank you for Alderman Brithwaite for pushing and working hard on this, on this change along with everybody else. So we're now going to move to call of the wards. We'll start with Alderman Wilson tonight.
No report.
Alderman Rue Simmons?
Thank you. Everyone, 5th Ward residents and friends, join us for National Night Out on the 6th of October. We'll be at Twiggs Food Trucks, including our own Soul and Smoke or Smoke and Soul, but their barbecue restaurant. Please do come for that. And we'll have a history hunt, something like a scavenger hunt, but a lot cooler. And we'll go all around the 5th Ward, finding some good history facts. We will also have our, not our prayer vigil, our candlelight vigil in honor of our neighbors that have been lost to violent crimes over the years. That will be led by Evanston Own It and Pastor Cherry. All are welcome. I'd like to make a referral to staff, and I'm assuming this would be to economic development, that we hire a consultant, a TIF consultant specifically, to look at possibly re-TIF-ing our West End TIF. And I'm hoping that we actually move forward with this because I've definitely brought this up before. There is an opportunity for us to add in properties that could be supported by TIF, and I'm hoping we could do that very soon. And I have one more thing. Oh, to the Northwestern Evanston City Council meeting or committee, if we could have on an agenda some real remedy, some real solutions on how we can address the concerns of the neighbors in the Fireman's Park area, as well as those that came to this meeting today. They have asked that President Shapiro be at a meeting, and so I would like to request that he is invited and present at a future meeting to discuss the concerns of the neighbors and how we might address these concerns moving forward because the neighbors are exhausted, and I appreciate that. So please have that on a future agenda. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Suffordin?
Sure. I first would like to echo what Alderman Rue Simmons just said. I think what we saw today with the amount of neighbors who came and had an issue, I think it's obvious that we need to change our approach. Northwestern zoning may not be the right tool to solve their problem. Their problem is real, and it's something that we have a responsibility to address. So thank you, Alderman Rue Simmons, for bringing that up. And thank you, Alderman Fisk, for your advocacy on behalf of your constituents. Also, October 15th, there'll be a 6th Ward meeting to discuss the budget, which will be public at that point. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Revel?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Rainey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just keep your eyes out if you live in the 8th Ward. We're going to be having a meeting in the next week regarding the beginning of the construction project on Howard Street, 999 to 1015 Howard, the Dairy Queen site. Other than that, no further report.
Great, thank you. Alderman Fleming?
Yeah, just want to continue condolence to the Munoz family who had to lay their son to rest this week. And then also, just an encouragement to our team of staff again, that we can just be really thinking about how we can be working with our youth who are maybe online, maybe not online, with our outreach team. Also, I made a email referral, but want to make sure it's on the record, referral to P&amp;D. The notices that go out from community development, a variety of them only go to property owners. And I would like to have a conversation about including the renters because they might have an opinion in terms of what is being proposed to properties they live near, but they won't have those notices because they are not the homeowner. So if we can have that on the agenda, that would be great.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Alderman Fisk? He's not with us. Alderman Brithwaite? I'm sorry? Alderman Brithwaite?
One second. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just thank you all for the support on the Black Lives Matter. I'm looking forward next week to bring back the historic naming of the Howard Payne Park. Also, next week, we'll be hosting National Night Out. Typically, we do movies in the park. This year, we're going to have a change of venue. We typically host it at Penny Park, but just due to social distancing, the event will be hosted at Mason Park, where we'll also have an opportunity for 2nd Ward residents to meet our new PST Officer, Otha Brooks, who's been with our force for many, many years. As well, we'll celebrate Officer Reggie Napier, who will be retiring this year. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Alderman Brithwaite. Two fine officers. Alderman, when?
Yes, thank you. I was going to say no report, but I have to say that to the residents on the 1900 block of Orington, I am sorry we let you down. We have just allowed your block now to become purchased by predatory landlords. And you put up a good fight, and I'm sorry that we were not able to listen to you and to support you. And now you will have to stay vigilant against every single special use application that comes in, and I know how difficult that is. So my apologies. That's all.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Wilson?
I did forget to mention that we do have the ribbon cutting and dedication for Robert Crown on Saturday, October 3rd at 10:00 a.m. That's going to be on Field 2, outside, respecting the social distancing, and of course, with our man on. With that, I would like to move pursuant to 5 Illinois Compiled Statutes, ILCS 120/2A, that the city council convene into executive session to discuss an agenda item regarding personnel. The agenda item is a permitted subject to be considered an executive session and is an enumerated exception under the Open Meetings Act. The exception is 5ILCS 120/2AC1.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, City Clerk, could you please take the role to recess into executive session?
Yes. Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Suffordin?
Aye.
Alderman Revel?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk? Alderman Brithwaite?
Aye.
And Alderman, when?
Aye.
All right, on an eight to zero vote, the city council is now recess into executive session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us this evening.